Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Mayor, thank you for those words. They were beautifully spoken. Chuck was a fine individual, fine human being. He will be greatly missed. That being said, officially from the city attorney's office, I would once again like to commend our mayor for her vision and for the seat that she planted in going after and receiving the opiate fund grant for the city of Whitehall. You weren't here, you were on your vacation, but you would have been extremely proud of the event that occurred last week with Sam Kionas. You would be proud of Deputy Chief Minapace for the effort that he put in. I believe we had a turnout of over 300 people that came out that night as it related to the opiate epidemic. The community of Whitehall was interested in it, they're concerned about it, and we're doing great work in that endeavor. Incidentally, the Whitehall May Pilot Drug Court, which is a part of that grant, is set to launch August the 14th. There's just one final key, and you'll have this on your desk, you're probably gonna have a very busy day tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sure I am.
With Heart of Ohio, there's professional services contract that the mayor has to review with Heart of Ohio. Council, you will receive legislation on that next week in committee, along with a copy of the contract. And then, once that final ingredient is done, everything is set, mayor's court, drug court, will be there. We have a place that will be, that we will have the court, which will be across the street at the Whitehall Division of Police. We'll utilize their room, and it will go on contiguous to the actual mayor's court. So we'll be running two courts at the same time. I'm also, I, I'm tempering my words because we actually may have one person already initiated in this mayor's court. Some things happened at court last week that may put this person directly in need of these types of services. And mind you, members of council, as well as members of the public, the grant, we're only servicing between 20 or 30 individuals for a two-year period. So we have to be very careful on who is chosen, but those that are chosen and those that are assessed to be in it, they will get the services necessary to break that addiction. So I want to thank you again, Mayor, for having that vision to do that. I really do believe that it's gonna be a benefit and a credit to our community.
I would like to say that the reason that we had Mr. Kionas come in was due to the generosity of the police department and their training budget. That, this is an example of complete teamwork. And I know that the fire department's training budget was pretty much stretched, and the grant budget, there was no room at all. So thank you to the police department in offering up their funds in order that we could, you know, have Mr. Kionas in and have that wonderful event for our public. So I just wanted to say thank you to police department.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our city auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight. I just would like to...
Thank you, have a good day.
Yeah, I'm just gonna stop. I won't report tonight.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. We have our treasurer, Mr. Steve Quinsel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I have no official report tonight.
All righty, thank you, sir. Well, the following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We have the auditor's expense report for June 2018, the auditor's bank report for June 2018, the auditor's statement of cash position report for June 2018, the auditor's revenue report for June 2018, the division of fire overtime report for June 2018, and the mayor's report to council for June 2018. Under communications, petitions, and claims, we have received the minutes from the July 12, 2018, meeting of the planning commission. Those are all the communications and stuff that we have at this time. We do have a public hearing scheduled tonight regarding ordinance 602018, which is amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.03C1 to allow Grace Educational and Tutoring Center to operate a school and tutoring center on the property located at 700 Bernhardt Road, parcel number 090000348, owned by Ebenezer Ethiopian Evangelical Church, LCMS. At this time, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 602018. Before we get started, though, I will say that this has been continued with the planning commission, and at this time, we don't have any recommendations for or against. However, if there's anyone here who would like to speak on behalf of ordinance 602018, you may come forward and state your name and address for the record. All right? If there is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to ordinance 602018, now would be your opportunity to come forth and speak in opposition to this ordinance. All right. Seeing no one coming forward, I will continue this public hearing meeting to our next scheduled meeting of the Whitehall City Council, which will be August 7th. And that meeting will be held at Columbus, at the Whitehall Community Park. And so we will continue the public hearing at that time. So, next on our agenda, we have the verification of copies. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll on whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any add-on legislation.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
All right. We're okay to move forward now. We have, under third readings, our first ordinance is 572018. It's making and approving a fund transfer in the amount of $1,200,000 from the transfer expense account to the Street Maintenance and Repair Fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 572018, amended as read and move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and adoption of ordinance 572018, also amended as read. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
You really want to get some facts, don't you?
Jumping there, fella.
I was after there.
Ordinance 572018 has been amended, so...
I ask for the amendment and the adoption.
Okay. I just want to make sure. We good with that, Mr. Attorney?
Do the amendment and adoption.
Amen.
I said amend as read, so...
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right, so...
At any rate, ordinance 572018 has been amended and adopted as read.
Okay. So now, we have ordinance 582018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $50,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund 101 to the income tax refunds expense account.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 582018 and move for its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of ordinance 582018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 582018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 602018. It's amending the zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under 1123.03C1 to allow Grace Educational and Tutoring Center to operate a school and tutoring center on the property located at 700 Bernhardt Road, parcel number 090000348, owned by Ebenezer Ethiopian Evangelical Church, LCMS.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 602018 and move to have a table until August 7th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Elmore to table ordinance 602018 to the, to the August 7, 2018, meeting. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 602018 has been tabled.
Mr. President, a point of orders, because I want to make sure we're correct here. In a motion, there can only be one issue entertained, and when we looked at what was the ordinance 57, we amended and adopted in the same motion. I don't know if we actually could do that, or if we need to revisit that.
No. As it was read pursuant to public, to the public hearing, it, it's not amended, it's read as, as read. So while on paper, it appears to be amended, as it was read, it was read, the actionable item, it was read to the public pursuant to what you were voting on. So it's superfluous, in one sense, to amend and adopt because the public has heard what the actual ordinance is.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, we're not motioning with, in one motion, two acts.
No, I understand what you're saying, but the, but the actionable item is that the public heard what the actual ordinance was as stated.
Thank you.
But on paper, it, it has the line and the strike through, but the pub, for public purposes, it's, it is what it is.
Thanks, Mike. Pardon me, Mr. President.
It's all right.
That's a good point. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. So that was, our last ordinance was the last item under third readings. Under second readings, we have ordinance 622018. It's authorizing the creation of the park stream restoration account and appropriating 626... Wait a minute.
That's right. Mm-hmm. That's right.
Okay. Well, I got two, I had two amounts, so I, I have the correct one highlighted, so let me start over again. Authorizing the creation of the park stream restoration account and appropriating $626,000 from unappropriated monies in the OPWC projects fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce ordinance 622018, which is amended as read, and ask for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor for the inter, suspension of rules.
Introduction and suspension of rules.
Introduction and suspension, okay. We're getting too complicated. Introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 622018, 622018, to be amended as read.
And suspended.
Amended and suspended as read.
Correct.
That's what he did. He amended and suspended.
Okay.
It's the same situation.
That's why I was wondering, because he couldn't adopt, amend, suspend, adopt.
Well, okay, so...
I just acknowledge that you amended it.
You were correct on that.
Okay.
Right. I acknowledge you amended it, and then asked for the suspension of rules.
What you did, the amendment, though. No, the amendment does not have to be approved as a separate voting action because what you are, because what you read is what you're voting on.
Okay.
As read.
But he still hasn't said it. Yeah.
Does he still have to say it's amended?
He doesn't have to.
If you've already read it?
The only reason why any, any member of council would state that it was amended is because it had a previous read that was different.
Which read, okay.
That was different than what you were actually voting on.
Okay, got it.
I believe it did.
Right. It, it would have had to, because this would be second reading.
Yes.
So for that reason, you can state amendment, but what you are voting on is what is read, which does not need a separate motion, because you, as council, have the power to vote and authorize legislation as read to the public.
Thank you.
So, so, in other, had I read the previous number, then we would have had to amend. But since I read the current number...
The current one.
That is the number that everybody's, I'm just trying to put it...
That is what they're voting for.
A real, yeah, a real simple way.
Sure.
The six number.
That I can understand.
Six seven four six.
I'm good. Okay.
Now, I'm good.
Questions or comments? Other questions or comments?
We've had enough comments.
All right.
Hand enough questions.
Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
All right. So the rules have been suspended on ordinance 622018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to the now.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of ordinance 622018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance 622018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 632018. It's authorizing the replacement of section 1128.04 and the repeal of sections 1128.05 and 1128.06. That ordinance is being read by title only. It's the last item of legislation we have under second reading. Under first reading, we have ordinance 642018. It's authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $180,000 from previously unappropriated monies in the general fund to various accounts in the general fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 642018, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 642018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 642018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of res, of ordnance 642018. Ms. Frymark? What? I'm confused. I'm confusing myself. Please call, it was already, we already voted on it. Yes?
To suspend.
To suspend.
Okay. Call the, please call the roll for adoption.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 642018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 652018. Authorizing the creation of the municipal net profit tax fees account, approving and making an appropriation in the amount of $2,000 from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the municipal net profit tax fees expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance 652018, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance 652018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 652018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of ordinance 652018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Order 652018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 662018. It's authorizing and approving the mayor to sign a contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1729 for the contract term January 1, 2017, to December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Our next ordinance is 672018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Cornic Cusin Construction Company for the purpose of providing construction management services for the Whitehall Community Center project with the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Ohio for the facility to be constructed at Whitehall Community Park and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Our next ordinance is 682018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Ohio for the lease of $25,000, $25,000 square feet facility to be constructed at Whitehall Community Park and declaring an emergency. That's being read by title only. Our next ordinance is 692018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with M+A Architects for architectural and consulting engineering services and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by title only. Our next ordinance is 702018. It's authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with the Young Men's Christian Association of Central Ohio for the purpose of providing an owner's representative on the Whitehall YMCA Community Center project located in Whitehall Community Park and declaring an emergency. That is being read by title only. Our next item of legislation may differ from the agenda that you have. I'm not sure if you actually, if the audience has the latest agenda, but it is Resolution 2027. It's resolving to approve then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to, Wes, how about you do that?
Go ahead. Finish.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 272018, move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Cantor for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 272018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 272018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Cantor for adoption of Resolution 272018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 272018 has been adopted. Our next resolution is 282018. It's authorizing the mayor to apply for and accept a grant from the Ohio Public Works Commission and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Resolution 282018 and move for the suspension of all rules, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cantor and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 282018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 282018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution 282018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Hannah?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 28282018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for full public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes. I might actually give you more time than that. All right. Seeing no one who is willing to come up and speak this evening, we will move on to our community day board. Who would like to start us off with community day board?
Nashville, night out, August 7th.
All right. Nashville, night out.
Whitehall Community Park.
What?
Whitehall Community Park. At Whitehall, at Whitehall, at Whitehall Community Park.
All right. Friday?
On Saturday. Yeah, what's going on Saturday?
Always that food truck. Yes.
On Friday is the, is, hold on, you ready? You finished? I'm sorry. On Friday is the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the home port...
That's right.
Whitehall Hamilton Crossing, and it's from 1:30 to 3:00, and the public is welcome. Come on in.
Who else has something?
On Saturday, or Sunday, the 29th, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
The 29th, we have our first annual, first three-on-three basketball at John Bishop Park. It goes from twelve till seven thirty.
We will have a movie in the park, uh, this Friday, and, uh, it should be on the city's, uh, Facebook page very, very soon, and there will be free popcorn. So bring your kiddies out and, uh, enjoy it.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty?
Is it Moana?
Moana.
Mo- Moana?
Moana.
Moard. If you read like I do, it, any one of those words, words. We also have, on Monday, the thirtieth, we have a, uh, a spaghetti dinner at K Avenue from five-thirty to seven-thirty, uh, to help a family that, uh, is in need from a fire, uh, a couple of weeks ago on the way. I'd like to see everybody out there that, that can make it. Again, that's at K Avenue from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and I hope I didn't steal your time for that.
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
Uh, it's five dollars a plate, um, that gets you a bottle of water, a plate of spaghetti, um, I believe garlic bread and salad, and then it's an extra dollar if you would like a soda.
But we can also give more.
Soda.
Correct?
Yes, you can give more, you can definitely bring more, uh, their plan having, I believe, to-go containers too, if you want to take some home for other people. Um, and I know she, they recently just found a place, I believe, and they're looking for other, uh, donations as well.
On Wednesday, August the first, we have the Norton Field, uh, party, um, from five o'clock till seven, I'm thinking that's what it is. So I'll just see on there, I know she'll have, uh, food and everything just for everybody, water, food, coffee.
Who else has something? All right, we'll move on to poll council, and we'll begin with Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, excuse me, why do you eulogize my father about six months ago? One of the lines that I used was, uh, a line from the movie, uh, Serendipity. It said, "The Greeks didn't ask," or "The Greeks didn't write obituaries, they asked if this man had passion." My father had passion. Chuck Underwood had passion for this community. This is so beloved to him. He obviously had two loves because he loved his native New York, but then he loved this community. And, um, the thing I remember more than anything, I just saw him at the VFW a couple weeks before he passed, and he's just such a kind person. I mean, that's, that's the thing that I remember more than anything. I didn't know him as long as a lot of you all have and stuff, but he was always kind, just always, I don't know, that's, that's my takeaway. Uh, on an unrelated note, happy National Tequila Day, everybody. And, uh...
Really?
No.
Wow, kidding.
There's a segue there.
Um, and then, uh, I hope to see everyone at the Food Truck Festival on Saturday. And Mark, I'm not buying you up here, you got it? All right.
Mark will give, Mike, Mark, Mark will give anybody a chocolate chip cookie who buys him a beer.
I see, sure.
All right, Ms. Elmore, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, again, I want to thank everybody for, for coming out, and also for people that are viewing the council meeting through Facebook. I also want to send my condol- condolences to the Underwood family and to keep them in prayer, uh, during their time of loss. Um, it takes an entire community, uh, to come together and words, uh, of, you know, condolence, sympathy do, uh, a world of good for the family, so, uh, again, my prayer is for the family. Also, I would like to, uh, invite, uh, Whitehall community to visit the website and stay informed. There are a lot of things that are happening in the city of Whitehall, and the best way to stay informed is to, to visit the website, plus it gives us a lot of hits and it shows that we're actively using our website, so continue to go to the website and keep yourself informed. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Coniston?
I would like to thank everybody for coming. Chris, I think you said it right when you said that he was just a nice guy. He was one that, he, he treated everybody as an individual, and he knew specific things about you, and he always made sure to mention that. And, um, that's a rare person that, that's like that. Um, last year, we wanted, uh, WCCA wanted to honor him as grand marshal, and he said to me that there are so many more people that, that deserve that, that more than he, and, um, he was so wrong on that because, um, just as, as you heard all of his wonderful, um, things about him, um, and he will be greatly missed, and I wish his family, um, lots of love right now.
Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to say, and I, I forgot to say this, uh, the Whitehall Yearling High School, uh, alumni, uh, party is August the fourth at Coaches, and it starts at six o'clock.
For what year?
Um, all years. The all Whitehall classroom, Coaches, from six till, it say, they say six to ten, but, you know, you have to play some cornhole or something, so probably go a little bit longer. Everybody is, the mayor, what you said about Chuck, it really got to me, I've known Chuck since, and his family actually, um, for thirty years, and I don't think I've ever met a man like him in my life. Uh, he was a good friend to myself and my family, my mom and dad, and, uh, just prayers for his family. Uh, it's a sad day and a sad time for the city of Whitehall. He was just somebody that, uh, you only meet one time in your life. So that's all I have, Mr. President. Oh, I have to say hello to Elizabeth and Isabella, I'm sorry. Hi, girls.
Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to echo what everybody else says, giving my condolences and prayers to the Underwood family. Um, I also want to thank everybody for coming out, everybody that's watching, um, and also agree with attorney Michael Vivins, is a really great show for, uh, informative event for the opioid crisis last week. Thank you to everybody that was able to make it out, and it's great to see that our city's really trying to get ahead of this and, and figure out a way to, um, kind of wrap our arms around it and, and figure it out.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to offer my condolences to the Underwood family, he will be greatly missed in this community, and I'm sure by his family as well. Thank everybody for coming.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd also thank you all for coming, and, uh, yeah, Chuck was, uh, a man of great integrity, and Mary, you said well all of his life experiences and things he would share with us. He's a quality friend and an even better mentor, and I was blessed to attend, I don't